Good evening, thank you for joining us. I need a motion to reconvene open session. Thank you, Mrs. Petrie, and second, Mrs. Saharsky. All in favor of convening? Very good. Okay, let's begin and open our meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing this evening is to present election results and reorganize the board. So, we have an election. Two candidates were elected to a three-year term. Lisa Welker with 1,727 votes and John Schichler for 1,318 votes. And we will start with taking the oath of office given to us by our Board Secretary, Ms. Johnston. So, we'll ask... Oh, sorry, we'll have it come up. But we'd like to have a motion to verify or accept the results, sorry. Okay, thank you, thank you. All in favor of verifying these results and approving them? Very good. Okay, sorry, I forgot that. So, where would you like us? Just up there in front?
Yeah, okay.
She's gonna give us the oath. Just ask that you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri...
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of school director...
Of school director.
In the school district R3...
In the school district R3.
County of Jefferson...
County of Jefferson.
State of Missouri...
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability according to law.
To the best of my ability according to law.
Well, let me take your seat over there. Now, for the reorganization, I will turn this portion of the meeting over to Dr. Corman.
All right, be the first to congratulate, but to you. We will start, as you can see here in the board packet and agenda, with background information according to policy BCA Critical and revised Missouri statutes as well as the Missouri Constitution. I will open the floor for nominations. I would call three times for nominations. A second will be required for each nomination. After the third, call for nominations. At which time, if there are any, if there are not any, the chair will ask for a motion to close nominations. A member of the board will move to close nominations. If seconded, this motion will require two-thirds majority for passage. After nominations have closed, members of the board may vote one time for any one of the nominees. The candidate receiving the largest number of votes plurality, but not necessarily majority, will be elected. If there is a tie between two or more nominees, those nominees who did not tie for the highest number of votes will be eliminated from consideration, and the board will vote again on those candidates who are tied during the previous vote. Person receiving the highest number of votes, again plurality, but not necessarily majority, will be elected. Does any board member object to this process? All right, the floor is now open. I'm calling for the first call for nominations for the Office of President of the Hillsborough R3 Board of Education.
I nominate Lisa Welker.
Okay, nomination on the floor. Board President Lisa Welker. By Beth Petrie, and seconded by Renee Saharsky. Third call. Seeing no others, we will entertain a motion for nominations to cease and Lisa Welker be placed and installed in the president's position for the Hillsborough R3 Board of Education by a vote of acclamation. I need a first. Beth Petrie, need a second. Renee Saharsky. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Any abstaining? All right, that is vote six oh one. Congratulations. You wanna do the rest of that?
No, no.
Let me keep going, all right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Vice President nominations. The floor is now open, and we'll consider nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Hillsborough R3 Board of Education.
I nominate Beth Petrie.
Vice President nominations, Beth Petrie.
Second.
Thank you, by Renee Saharsky. And seconded by Jane Heine. Vice President, second call. Vice President, third call. Seeing none, the floor... Chair would entertain a motion for nominations to cease and for Beth Petrie to be installed as Vice President of the Hillsborough R3 Board of Education by a vote of acclamation. Lisa Welker as a first.
Second.
By Renee Saharsky, seconded. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Five. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Two. The vote is five two. Floor is now open and considering nominations for the Office of Treasurer of the Hillsborough R3 Board of Education.
Renee Saharsky.
Got a motion on the floor for Renee Saharsky.
Second.
Motion made by Beth Petrie, seconded by Lisa Welker. Sorry, Jane. Second call. Floor now entertaining motions for nominations to cease and a vote of acclamation for Renee Saharsky to be installed in the Office of Treasurer of Hillsborough R3 Board of Education. Need a motion? Beth Petrie? Jane Heine? All those in favor, let me know by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Six. Any opposed? Any abstaining? One. The vote is six zero and one.
Okay, we also need to recognize who are Board of Education Secretary, Custodian of Records be, so I need a nomination for that.
Beth Ann Johnson.
Thank you, a second. By Angie. Second call. And the third call. Okay, so we have the nomination for the Office of Secretary and Custodian of Records to be Beth Ann Johnson. So, we need a motion to cease.
I make an emergency cease.
Thank you. First by Angie.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, a show of hands to approve Beth Ann as our Board Secretary and Custodian of Records. Raise your hand, thank you. Okay. We have an election. Congratulations all of those, yes, thank you. Okay. So, we'll move into... Okay, so we'll move into special recognitions this evening. I think our junior high in high school have things to share with us. Mr. Ramsey, would you do the honor, please?
I will. Junior high would like to recognize the following teams. Quiz Bowl Champions, the seventh grade won first place, Daniel Jefferson County Quiz Bowl. There are six rounds and ten questions over the four subjects, plus arts and entertainment and sports. The team led throughout the whole competition and worked really well together. Team members are Jonah Allison, Josh Allison, Anna Crosby, Elizabeth Dieter, Ryan Evers, Caitlin Hindle, Drew Isaacson, and Kyle Terman. The eighth grade team also did very well, took second overall. Quiz Bowl team were coached by Mr. Aaron Fady, Mrs. Chris Groundberg, and Mrs. Kristen Merritt. Jefferson County Math Competition, the junior high math team competed this Jefferson College Math Contest on Monday, March 19. The team took third overall in the junior high division with a score of 249. Individually, Sophia Harrell placed third in the seventh grade division with a score of 51. Thank you, Mr. Joe Tucker, for coaching our team at this academic competition. We would also like to recognize the junior high archery team, coached by Dan Dropper. They took third place at the state competition. And I'd just like to note that was third place out of at least forty-eight teams. So, it was very, very significant. We would also like to take a moment and just recognize the academic performance of our winter season student athletes. And we're very proud of their hard work, both in their sports and in classroom. We'd like to recognize their overall GPAs. Our seventh grade girls' basketball earned a 3.7 GPA with Jenna Brock, Dylan Day, Caitlin Hindle, Isabel Harrell, Riley Cruz, and Leah Poe, 4.0s. Our eighth grade girls' basketball earned a combined GPA, or average GPA of 3.7 with Haley Genge and Maya Wright earning 4.0. Pommie Kelly averaged a 3.6 GPA with Haley Genge, Isabella Harrell, and Haley Schmidt earning 4.0s. Our cheer team earned a 3.5 GPA with Kayden Arnold and Ashley Dean earning 4.0. Our seventh grade boys' basketball earned a 3.4 GPA with Jonah Allison, Josh Allison, and Austin Roman earning 4.0. Our eighth grade boys' basketball earned a 3.2 GPA with Alan Moore earning 4.0. And lastly, to better recognize our wrestling team earned a 3.0 GPA with Chase Random, Wyatt Husky, and Demetrius Slossburg earning 4.0s.
Very good, thank you. And we'll then hear from the high school. Dr. Freeman?
We are very proud to share that teachers Cindy Hyder and Chris Miller have both recently been awarded Jefferson County Region MST A Classroom Project Awards in the amount of $100. Mrs. Hyder will use her funds on supplies for next year's new Teaching Pathways course in our facts department. And Mr. Miller will use his to purchase another stand-up desk for our special education department. We have several of those, but we need more, so that's awesome. And then, the Hillsborough High School StuCo earned an honor this year. The high school student council was named a Missouri Honored Council at the state convention held in March. And this award is equivalent to an all-state recognition in music or athletics. This is the first year that our council has applied, and we're very excited and proud that they received the accolade on their first attempt. Dooly, Shaw, Husky, Lakemi, and Mayberry to attend Missouri Girls and Boys State. Molly Dooly and Abby Shaw will represent our high school as delegates to the 2018 Girls State Conference. While Reed Husky, Josh Lakemi, and Ryan Mayberry have been selected as the 2018 delegates to the Missouri Boys State Conference. Both of those conferences will take place this June at the University of Central Missouri in Warrensburg. And our JAG students have been helping prepare a new Head Start Center. Students from our JAG classes have been working with the Jefferson Franklin Community Action Corporation, helping members getting a building ready to become a new Head Start Center in DeSoto. We're really excited about that. Then we have some news about Kylie Outlaw and Justin Sanders. They've been selected for state academic honors. Kylie Outlaw was recently named to the Missouri Scholars 100, a statewide program that honors 100 of Missouri's top academic students in the graduating class of 2018. That should've said, yeah, that's right, 2018. Kylie will be recognized at a luncheon in Jefferson City on April 22. Justin Sanders received an honorable mention in the program. Both students had to meet criteria in an academic decathlon, which includes ten events designated or designed to assure that the academic strength of the students, including a minimum GPA of 3.750 and minimum ACT score of 29, being ranked in the upper 10% of his or her class, have taken upper-level courses in math, English, science, and foreign language, and be an exemplary school student, and be involved in at least one school activity. So, we're very proud. It's been a while since we've had a Missouri Scholar 100, so we're excited about that. Film by Zach Getkin can be spotlighted at the Silent Film Festival. Zach is in our radio and TV class, and his silent film was accepted into an international youth silent film festival. Taylor Matzger helped Zach film his movie, and his film will be shown at the Redford Theater in Detroit on April 21. Our archery team were the state champions, so we're super excited about this. In just their second year as a team, the high school archers became the 2018 state champions at the high school level. In addition to being state champs, they set a new record for the highest score ever shot at the Missouri State Tournament. Congratulations to all the members of the archery team for their hard work toward the achievement of that goal. Individual award winners in the top five bi-gender were Madison Ginge in fifth place with a score of 292, and Donald Haluka in second place, also with a score of 292 points. I'm not sure how that works, but that's the way it works. Several of the archers also competed in the 3D competition. In 3D, Sophia Haluka took third place as a female, and Donald Haluka took first place male and first place overall, which is awesome. Cox places at District Speech Tournament. Michael Cox walked away with a fifth and seventh place medal at our speech district tournament on March 17. And then, we have some band news. The Hillsborough High School Band earns top spots this spring. The high school jazz ensemble placed second in the 4A Division March 10 at the Mineral Area College Jazz Festival. Reed Husky and Chase Schnack were both recognized as outstanding soloists during their performance. Additionally, on February 24, the jazz ensemble competed at the Missouri State University Jazz Festival and received a superior rating and first in 4A. The following are the band district solo and ensemble results. Fifteen exemplary one ratings and five outstanding two ratings. Mr. Dieter believes and told me that this is the most one ratings and overall the most events we have had since he has been at Hillsborough. We're very proud of these students and their accomplishments, their hard work and dedication was evident in all of their performances. Reed Husky earned a one on tenor sax solo. Keegan Cohen on alto sax solo got a one. Michael Brock on bass clarinet solo got a one. Autumn Winslet, Lizzie Klosser, Taylor Husky also received a one on their clarinet trio. Autumn Winslet on her clarinet solo received a one. Kyter Karst on tenor sax solo received a two, which is outstanding. Keegan Cohen, Tristan Jones, Reed Husky on their saxophone trio received a one. Chester Smucker, Bruce on piano solo received a one. Chase Schnack, Drayton Jones, Chris O., Tim Logan Howard on their percussion ensemble earned a two. Alison Dietrich on her clarinet solo earned a one. Logan Howard on his trombone solo earned a one. Tristan Jones with his alto sax solo earned a one. Samantha Verentin on her flute solo received a one. Eli Tucker on his trombone solo received a two. Claire Maui on her tenor sax solo received a two. Benjamin Wild on his alto sax solo received a one. Madison Ginge on her flute solo received a one. Miranda Lee on her trumpet solo received a one. Sarah Russell with her clarinet solo received a one. And Kevin Pratt on his snare drum solo received a two.
Lot of good things going on at the high school. That's good to hear. We then move to the visitors that would like to address the board this evening. We have two that signed up. Just a few comments before we have you come forward. Please note that you will be allowed three minutes to address the board. I will be keeping time on my little timer here. So, if you see me wave at you, that means you're coming to the end of your timeframe. Please limit your comments to topics that are appropriate for the board. And I may interrupt you if your comments stray into an area that should not be discussed in an open session. The Missouri Sunshine Law limits the ability of board members to respond to your comments. Consequently, it is unlikely that the board will engage in a discussion of your topic during tonight's meeting. All right? The first visitor that has signed up would be MST A.
We're gonna make it short, please.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Noel Horner. I am the president of our Local Horse Association. This is Rhonda Harrison, our vice president. First of all, let's say, Mrs. Welker, congratulations on your reelection. We look forward to working with you continuously. And Mr. Schichler, welcome to our board, and we look forward to developing that relationship with you for our students. We'd like to give you our proposals for our negotiation season that's upcoming. Rhonda's passing them out. We look forward to working with you on the benefit for our students and our staff. And I'm sure we're gonna have a positive time working together and positive outcome.
We hope so.
I have faith in you. And we appreciate you giving us time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Our second visitor would be Melissa Hindle. And we ask that you come forward. You may sit at the little desk or stand, whatever you feel like.
Hi. My name is Melissa Hindle, and I am the concerned parent that collected the letters that you received. I have three daughters in the district who play basketball. My eldest played for the ninth grade team this year, and she loved playing for her coach so much that now she is also a soccer player, even though she hates the cold. She loved that her coach valued her hard work, dedication, and quick defense enough to make her a starter, and did not hold against her that she was only five foot two and not the best shot. My middle daughter is a seventh grader. I loved how her coach had the team do community service projects and taught the girls that there is more to being an athlete than just playing the game. I know she took a lot of criticism for not knowing much about basketball, but I think she and the girls learned a lot together. The team shares, that team shares the ball better than any team I have seen. It's never about a single star, but always playing as a team. My youngest is a fifth grader who played in the youth basketball league. I want to personally thank Mr. Allison for taking so much of his time to set up this program. I love how it is for everybody who wants to play and learn about basketball and tries to give each child the competition level that they are ready for. I know it needs some fine tuning, but I think this first season was a huge success and hopes that it makes Hillsborough's basketball program that much stronger in the future. I know I would like to see the girls' program get stronger in the future. My girls play at three different levels, but I don't see anything that ties those levels together. I don't see any evidence that the girls' program has a direction. At the junior high level, there does not seem to be any involvement from the high school at all. I would ask my daughter if anyone was helping her new coach with practice, and most of the time the answer was no, and the few times that the answer was yes, the help came from the eighth grade coach, who willingly admits to me he's a better softball coach than a basketball coach. I was very disappointed that there was not more support for this brand-new coach in the program. It is not, it is not a surprise that we have had three different seventh-grade girls' coaches in three years if they're not supplied with guidelines and coaching support. With the youth basketball league, Mr. Allison was the only person I saw checking on the girls' teams to see how things were going. I think it would be great if our girls started learning a few of the offices and defenses that they will use when they are older, so they have a good foundation to build on. I think a consistent coaching philosophy would be more beneficial than the each-team-for-itself philosophy that I see now. The fact that the girls have played, the fact that girls have played together for years and then get split up to fill in the gaps in the upper levels also seems to weaken our teams. Our teams let, other teams let freshmen play up and down, but why can't we? So, I hope to be into basketball for the long haul. I have eight years of this ahead of me. I have no expectations that my girls will play ball at a higher level. Face it, we are a short family. I am not concerned about sports scholarships. I believe that sports provide invaluable lessons such as hard work, teamwork, good sportsmanship, and how to deal with victory and loss gracefully. These are ideas that I don't feel are also being fostered at the water city level.
That's kind.
That's okay.
I appreciate you coming. Thank you for your comments. All righty, we'll move on then. We have our items on the consent agenda that need approval this evening. You've had an opportunity to look through the packet, review the items, and hopefully you ask questions if you had any beforehand. I'm looking for a motion at this moment to approve the consent item. Thank you. First by Mrs. Petrie. Thank you, Jane. Are there any comments or questions or concerns that you have with any of the items? Okay, everybody good? All in favor in approving the agenda, the consent agenda and the items on it, raise your hand. Any no vote? Abstaining? Okay. You're abstaining? Okay, so we have two.
Yes, ma'am, two.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into reports.
All right, superintendent's report. School calendar, we've been having, actually had some great conversations, right Ray, earlier this week, actually yesterday. We spent about an hour with a lot of people in this room. It's interesting, we're excited. The projects are looking to be underway. What is it, like the 23rd, Ray? We're hoping, we're shooting for April the 23rd to start doing some things externally, of course. We sat down, had a long conversation with project timelines, things that we were looking at as a district just to make sure that we could start the calendar planning process. The last thing we wanted to do as a district is get a calendar out there for next school year. Too soon, and what winds up happening is we have to modify dates. So, if you want to jot these dates down in case you have questions from local patrons, we're gonna get this out to employees coming up. The calendar committee will be meeting. So, those of you, I believe Angie and Rob, I've been hearing from them about the school calendar. I want to point out that April 23 is the start date for construction. Now, this was actually put into the bid document, so these are what we consider farm dates at this time. We're waiting on approval from the city of Hillsborough to get us the work permits we need to start building. But, if you saw the stack of plans, it's been taking them a little bit of time to work through that. 5/28, May 28 is the tentative date, actually, to start interior remodel. I say tentative, but that's gonna happen. What we have to do is coordinate logistically with our building administrators, technology, Ray. We're gonna have to really get all the technology out of the buildings between the end of school and the 28th for them to start taking over. Now, what I mean by that is just in the offices, the classrooms to which they're gonna be remodeling or demoing any of the renovations in classrooms. Those have to be taken care of. 8/1, that is August the 1st, again, a bid date. That is when substantial completion of the interior remodel is supposed to be done by contract. So, that gave me the opportunity to say, okay, we have this written down. We have a contract. 8/1, they're gonna be out, so now the calendar committee can start planning. Now, when I say out, that means now they're outside. They're not gonna be gone. And they told me, 'cause I clarified this, right Ray, it doesn't mean that the punch list will all be taken care of, but for the most part, if they're touching up paint here or there, that still gives them some time before the projected start date of school. However, it might not be before the return of staff. Right now, we're shooting for 12/8, December the 8th, 2018, a substantial completion of the building additions and associated site work at the primary and the elementary school. That's 200 calendar days. That's 200 calendar days. Now, currently, the junior high for outside addition to be completed is 2 six, February the 6th, 2019. That's 260 calendar days. What I found interesting in this project, Ray, is that each one is its own standalone project. The way it was bid out, it was different contractors could bid on different projects in order for the district to get the best cost analysis based on our project. So one contractor bid on all of them, was awarded all of them, but yet they're gonna be built and together, but separated by three, right, Ray? I guess that's the best way to put it, they're gonna be separated out. Now, I kinda like that, actually, because it's easier for Kelly, sorry, Kelly, and me to track how much each expenditure is per building based upon your budget projections. Rather than one big lump sum, if they're finishing in one building faster than the other, we know how much we're paying out. So she'll get three certified payrolls, which will mean you'll issue three checks monthly to pay for those fees. So, anyway, I say all that to say this. We're looking at April the 23rd for our first calendar meeting. I have emailed the calendar staff, those staff members that are part of the calendar committee, and we're gonna have those conversations. Part of that first meeting, those of you that settled calendar before, is to review the laws with regard to the Missouri, revised Missouri statutes and school district calendars, talk about the committee expectations, discuss this prior year's calendar, how to track likes, dislikes, start building our survey descriptors, our questions, and get our staffs surveyed April 24 through 27. That will allow us on May the 1st to have typically with our second and final meeting, where we go over the survey results and we develop the calendar and discuss among ourselves what to propose to the board. May the 2nd, the final preparations to the calendar, so any changes we make, I go back and change, and then we're gonna send that out both to the board and to the staff, and projecting for a May 3rd special meeting for the calendar if the board approves of that date, May 3rd. And you say, Doc, why are you trying to get this done so fast? Well, the staff need to know, parents wanna know. I've had one call, I was speaking with Director Cruz, when a parent called upset that they can't plan their summer vacation because they don't have the calendar. I politely said, ma'am, I'm here to educate kids, not plan around your vacation, but yet I do understand parents wanna know and have some time to plan, as well as some of our coaches and activities. Now, with that said, little bit of a conundrum, unfortunately Rachel Carroll's not here with us, with summer school, we wanted to try to at least have our preschool kiddos down at the primary. What we wanted to avoid was having three cafeteria sites. We wanted to either try to bust them over, bust them back, do something, because it's really important for the preschool kids to get used to the environment, the routine, the process of doing school. The more I look at it, well, the process is gonna be so different, the only thing they're gonna have is kindergarten classroom. You know, because they're gonna be hearing a lot of building going on, which isn't the same, they'll be using different restrooms, they won't be able to use the playgrounds, so it's not logistically, I think, gonna work. And here's the main reason why. When we were discussing this, when they're starting to demo the principal's office, they're gonna hook the intercom system, they're gonna unhook the fire alarm system, they're gonna, so that in itself poses a problem. It looks like we're gonna be doing the intermediate, Scott. Ray's gonna have to be doing some, I'd almost say toilet upgrades, Ray, what do you call that?
Downgrades.
Downgrades, we're gonna have to downsize the commodes to the kids, but I think Ray has a plan of some little ramps or a stool for the stool, I don't know, Ray, I don't know what it's called, but we're working on that, hate to put Ray on the spot, but, you know, it's something to, to know, that you have to be flexible. So that, if you read the first part of the update school calendar, you kinda know what the plan is for the calendar. I emailed the committee and told them, normally they get to have input on when we're gonna have our calendar committee meetings, but unfortunately, it's not gonna happen this time, we just set the dates. And for the most part, all the people, with the exception of two, and maybe three, will not be able to make it, the first meeting, but they can make the second meeting. Another update, one of the things that I cannot take credit for, but I love the idea, is breakfast or lunch with cops. What, what we would like to do, if you read that in here, we don't know what it's gonna cost, but we're projecting around 200 bucks a month, that law enforcement, both Hillsborough and Jefferson County, if they're in uniform and on duty, we welcome them to come to school and have lunch. Have to be seen in the school, be around school, park the cruisers in the front door, at the front door, come in, have a quick breakfast or lunch on, on us, and get them more involved, more outreach with the community. So I think that's a great thing. If, if there's no objections, we'd like to start that, see how it goes between now and the end of school. And, and at least I think have a bigger police presence within the school community and in, in our buildings. We did talk about reaching out to local firefighters and first responders and doing those things, but I don't know their availability or if they even can. So, well, John and I talked about it, but I don't know where, I know Soto's talked about it, I know it's kinda going around the superintendents of, hey, we need to do a little bit more community outreach, and I figure with those guys being here and ladies, it would be a great opportunity. An update from central office and building administrators, we've been reviewing the request that was brought forward last month by patron Mark Williams, where Mark talked about he would like to see the board, or not, the board not approve student handbooks if a page wasn't dedicated to, to suicide awareness. We, as an administrative team, decided, hey, that's a great idea, but we're gonna look more at just mental health resources in general, providing those avenues in student handbooks. Right now, we're discussing that intermediate up to high school age and what that would look like. We haven't firmly settled on exactly what's gonna be in there or the resources, but we're working on that. I thought it was good to let you know that we like ideas from the patrons, they bring them forward, we evaluate them, and if it's, if we can make it work and it makes sense, then that's what we're gonna do. A couple of dates I need you to check for me before I'm done, I'm not gonna read through all of the informational items. Policy committee meeting, we, we had a email come through right back then today or yesterday from MSBA that says we need to have two policies approved and in place, being in effect by July 1. So if you're on the policy committee meeting, we're looking at May the 7th, the 8th, or the 10th, to have a policy committee meeting, which will allow for May 1st read and June final read and approval for this policy to be in effect by July 1. So if you could, you don't have to tell me right now, but just please get with me if you're on those committees and see if 7th, 8th, and 10th. It will be at four in this room, correct?
Just pick one of those dates?
Yes, Beth Ann, who's, we have Mrs. Harsh, she's on there, right? And Angie and Lisa, and Beth Petrie is an alternate, I believe, right? Okay. So if that date works, please let me or Beth Ann know in the middle of the meeting. The last thing I have for you is, we've run into some scheduling conflicts for the June board meeting that is currently scheduled on June the 28th. I know I had a couple of board members share with me as well, that's a conflicting date for their schedules. We would like to know if it, if it's okay to move the June meeting up one week to June 21st. Will that work with your schedule?
It'd be better for me.
Better, okay.
I was one of the ones that couldn't go.
Oh, you're one, so that's one, two, three, it's three board members, okay. So, June 21st, that.
So we need to approve that, right? Make them.
Beth Ann, we vote to approve the dates for board meetings in July, right? We'll vote on setting the dates for board meetings.
June's already set.
So you'll, you'll need to vote.
So I need a, I need a motion to move the board meeting to June 21st. Okay.
So Angie, I hope you, Beth Petrie, move to.
And that was the second, too.
21st, correct.
Any, anybody else, John, would that be a problem for you?
No.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to change the board meeting from June 28th to June 21st. All in favor, raise your hand. Alright, very good.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Facilities and grounds with Director Best.
Thanks for leaving me on the line. I've been helping you out all day. I've given you the lead-ins. I hope I didn't take your material, Ray.
That's it. What were you talking about? No, actually, it's been pretty exciting, actually, as Dr. Corman kinda led us into the beginning of what we're started of this contract of the buildings and so forth, it's gonna be pretty fun. We did spend a lot of time there today, and we got to walk around, we got to learn some of the personnel's gonna be involved, and our general contractor, which is Brock Miller as well, and Holton's gonna be an outstanding gentleman to work with and everything, and he's got two superintendents with him, under him, as Dr. Corman said, that we'll have people split up, so we're gonna go meet with them about every two weeks after they get mobile. They're gonna get onsite, Saturday Monday, and get all of our safety devices up and placed, so we've got kids and our staff safe, of course, as well, they're gonna be routing trucks and supplies and all that, and dog trailers, and they're gonna be working with us very closely to make sure that that is all done correctly. I've been in contact with the principals today a lot, working on the fact of what they've got going on in their buildings, coordinating that with, which will be put on calendar for the general to share with the superintendents that they know that they can't be in a certain area at certain dates because of them then. So they're gonna be making sure, and we're gonna make sure while we're watching them, make sure they're not gonna be out of nowhere, okay?
Now, Ray, there's three trailers, one in each facility, for the job site trailers?
Yeah, there'll be a job site trailer at each location, they will be enclosed, protected, so nobody can get in them for one, and two, nobody gets hurt. That's the most important we've got going on. As you know, we're gonna be starting this probably, they will start probably the 1st of May, putting the machinery in the ground, causing the permits, but that's our goal. They would like to start sooner, and we'd love for them to start sooner, but we gotta wait for permits, so as soon as they'll give us all the permits, we're hands-on board already, of course, with the fire, and we're just waiting for the city to give us, um, the permits, so we can move forward. So, that's what we've been doing, that and working on furniture, all the, we've been working with the buildings as well as architects, trying to get all those lists and piles, so we can get that information to Kelly as well as Doc, and make sure that we're on board with it, and see if we're making any changes right off the bat, so we can do as less changes as possible, and that way we can keep it as smooth as possible. We will be in the buildings with technology here soon, like Doc said, we will take what we can take out there. Whatever we can take that they're gonna wind up tearing out and throwing away, and we can utilize down the road even, we'll find places to store it for it, so, alright? Including ceiling tiles, we're gonna live with that, too, so. So, anyway, on that, my report, very simple. I just kinda threw some information out there, just so you had it, because we've been kinda tied up with contractors and valuation and stuff like that, so I didn't really do a whole lot of the play with that type of stuff this past month, but I did wanna let you know that the arch helicopters coming out, they got that scheduled through landing in the field out here between the intermediate and elementary on the 27th, so about 5:00 p.m., so if you wanna come out, see, that's kinda cool. And then we got a bunch of concerts coming up next week, as well as we had something this week, of course, and we got that coming up. We got the school picnic at the primary, so I'd like to do, see the color run, but you've never seen a color run, it's pretty cool. So it's gonna be kinda neat to see it, so. That starts at 5:00 this Thursday, they got all the fishing days coming up, and we did do the state inspection on the elevators today, and all of them passed, so they had to do a couple of minor adjustments and parts, but they fixed it onsite, we should get that report in writing next, within the next three weeks, and everything, so all of them are good. And using our insurance company, as y'all know, was here April the 10th to reevaluate the value of the district and per building, have the report, it looks good, unpart, well, which is good and bad, but just remember, as we finish all these buildings, they're gonna be back next year and they'll really do it again, and of course, that makes us go up a little higher, so, but, then we're still protected, though, but they will be back next year again. They will usually do this about every three or four years, but because of our growth, they're gonna be back next year, they're gonna reevaluate this already, so. Other than that, one last thing, the carmel, school carmel's, April 27th, at the fairground, so hopefully everybody come and have fun, and hope no more rain.
Yeah, no rain.
No rain.
Yeah, really.
That's what I got. Anything? Questions? Always around if you need us.
Make sure.
So, thank you.
So we'll move on to technology.
Good evening. This was a shorter turnaround time, we only had 20 days from Melissa. We did complete 94 work orders during that time. We installed an additional smart board at the intermediate. We're currently working on the antivirus solution, remember I told you that Avast, we all in our, can get that for free, so we've been listening to some web access, trying to decide what we're gonna go with. The job care that we had was kinda neat, we set up a kiosk station so that when applicants came in and they would just sign in, it was really kinda neat because we didn't have a line at that point, so they would just sign in themselves on the Chromebooks, so that turned out pretty well. We set up one more classroom of Chromebooks at the elementary, that should really help us with the map testing. And we're working on our tech curriculum, we're finished with it, did a great job, the teachers did an outstanding job with that, so that's going to Melissa now, and then I hope to have that to you at the next board meeting. And we've been doing, already working on building moves and moving things around, so we're trying to get ready. We met with all the principals that are involved with it, and we've got a plan set up, we've got dates set up when we're gonna start moving things, and we've actually have gone in there and already started on some things. Any questions? I'll be fine. Exciting.
Alright, thank you very much. Now we'll turn it over to Mrs. Ginn for our financial report.
I'm gonna stay over here because I don't print out my, sorry, I need my computer. So if you, if you look at my graphs, you can see that, you know, we continue to trend just like we should, so there's not a whole lot of change there. I anticipate the rest of the year, if we continue to follow that same pattern, but this is a good visual, so you can, you're assured that things are happening the way that they were supposed to happen. As far as our financial statement for this month, if you keep going down here, I know if you look at the comparative percentages, it looks a little off, but when I go in and I take out the bond, it is dead on. When I look at the prior year and I take out the bond, which I'll hit next month, we're right at 83% on revenue and expenditures, we're very close as well, because we have bond money budgeted, but we haven't been, we haven't paid it out, so that's why our, you know, that percent of budget is a little off. As far as revenue, I have not heard anything new from Dussey because I don't have that report yet, because we pushed the meeting up, so I haven't gotten any kind of updates on that, but I haven't heard anything at any of my meetings, so things are going good with state revenue right now, as far as our local revenue, that is consistent as well. Expenditures, you know, we're trying to close out our spending for the year, purchase orders, we're gonna have those bond expenses come through towards the end of the year, I anticipate that, but we know that. We're finalizing all the purchasing, I'm finalizing the budget as far as the big departmental budgets, maintenance, transportation, we gotta work on special ed and curriculum, so that I can have that document to you next month, so you have a full month to review it before the June meeting, so it could be time to go through it. Other than that, I've still been working on the account number conversion that Dussey is requiring us to do for the Every Student Succeeds Act. I went to a training last week on that. I'm assured that I'm on the right path, but it's gonna be a lot of work. I kinda did some code cleanup, I did the conversion in our accounting system, and now I have to go in and change things and move things around, so I'll continue that through next year, but I'm trying to get those numbers mailed down so they, they don't change on the building secretaries, 90%. Other than that, things are normal-ish in my world.
That's nice.
If you have any questions, you know, just let me know, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Alright, we have a little bit of unfinished business from last month. Oh, I forgot.
We just have an update, so I don't know if you guys recall, the past, about two months ago, I made the suggestion about a positivity week. Molly and I have definitely done some research into that, and we found that National Positivity Day is September 13th, so we're looking at definitely taking that summer break to kinda plan out this really cool event, it'll be right before homecoming week, so we're gonna be really excited planning that, and so hopefully that'll go smoothly, so, that's it.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry. Alright, so now we get to the unfinished business of the discussion with Pretty in Pajamas and having to change the name, correct? What did we find out about changing that?
Well, it's taken forever, but we were able to figure out by using board policy KG, the district has the discretion to co-sponsor. to co-sponsor the group with an outside civic organization, such as Rotary. So, utilizing Policy KG, you can change the name, and you can be a co-sponsor, allow Rotary to be a co-sponsor, which allows the group the same access as a district sponsored group. Okay? So, with all that said, again, you still have to have the advisor. The advisor would not be changing, correct, Mr. Marino? Stephanie Gillespie is still advisor. Is that, is that a paid position, Mr. Marino? Is that volunteer position?
It's a paid position.
Paid position?
Yes.
Okay, Pretty in Pajamas is a on the salary schedule for extra duty.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. So, as long as you have that position, pay supervisor, according to the attorneys, you can do that. They utilize Policy KG and Policy IGD. So, with that, I recommend that you accept the recommendation that was submitted to you in your board packet, changing the name to the Interactive Club, and using the terms "co-sponsor" with Rotary International Hillsborough Branch.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that? We discussed this last month, but it's a much. Okay. So, we are going to co-sponsor and change the name to Interactive Club, correct?
Yes.
On favor of accepting these changes, raise your hand, please. Thank you.
Rob, would you second it?
Yes, he did.
Dr. Freeman, will you let Mrs. Gillespie know? Real quick, I know she was nervously waiting.
Duh.
Thanks, Ed.
He already did that. Alright, so, we can successfully move forward then to new business. Except when a computer is frozen. Let's see what happens. So, we'll move on to new business. We were given the proposal for the staff recognition dinner for the 2018-19 school year. We were given the information. So, if we'd like to move forward, I'll host a motion, or I'll make a motion to host the 2018-19 staff recognition next year. Thank you. Okay, Beth and Reddick, and Jane, Calderon Adrian. Okay, any discussion or questions? All in favor, raise your hand then. Alright, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, Epstein, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. I was pointing at my computer here. Okay, we'll move on then. We have a proposal to, let me see if I can. Approve the district's participation in the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act program. Let's make the motion and then we'll discuss it. Do I have a motion to approve our participation in this program?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Angie. And second, Beth. Okay, any questions about this program or concerns? I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of our participation, raise your hand, please. Thank you. Alright, very good. The next item is the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding, with the Lutheran Family and Children's Services. You wanna give us a little information about, this is a new company or group that we're working with, correct?
Yes. They, Melissa's been doing the research on that, so I'll be part of her.
They approached us, they worked with several larger school districts in St. Louis County. I mean, it's non-faith based. They approached us to work with junior high students, and they would provide a therapist anywhere between one to three days. They are partially grant funded and partially funded through Jefferson County Dental Health. They were waiting for some additional funding to come through with them, but they know that they can guarantee us at least one day at the junior high to do some at-risk assessments. It's in some dental health therapy and things like that. But they're, we're permission. It would also be available during the summer. As you know, kids' needs don't stop just because they're not here. So, it would be available one to three days in the summer, and they haven't told us yet how many days, but they would guarantee us at least one. And no cost.
And not religious based?
Not religious based, it's not religious based, correct.
And it's serving how many?
It would depend on, it would be at the junior high. The MOU specifically, to put the junior high in, we asked that they not do that if there were a situation at high school, for example, with some sort of risk assessment. We didn't want to prevent that from happening. But primarily with the junior high. And they approached that building specifically.
I make a recommendation with accepting MOU, and we take out junior high or add?
No, it's fixed in here.
It is fixed in?
Yes.
Okay. On my MOU, it says junior high.
Right, but it, it's for the district if you leave a little part.
So, Angie's making a motion to accept this proposal?
Second.
Thank you. One, two, second.
John, that's.
Okay. John?
John.
I heard his voice. I just didn't know who it was. Okay, any other thoughts or questions about this proposal? Alright, all in favor to accept this proposal and to approve it? Very good. Okay, next item has to do with MSVA. It's the renewal of our planners. Oh, I skipped one, sorry. I was in hurry with my computers. We need to approve and purchase the planners for the elementary, intermediate, and junior high. The bids or quotes were given to us, that was on your second page, and they are requesting that we purchase them for the next school year.
Thank you, Rob.
Second.
And Beth. Any questions about approving the purchase of the planners?
I don't really have any, just a question, have, is there anybody locally to do a printing process instead of, you know, going further away? And I know Scott has been in charge of this in the past too, and I was just curious.
I'm sure there is.
Is the issue. They're not comparable, Ms. Ginn.
Well, that's kinda what this group does, just schools. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Any other questions or thoughts? All in favor of approving the purchase of the planners? Raise your hand, please. All, okay. Very good. Okay, now we're gonna talk about the renewal of our agreement with MSVA. I need a motion then to approve this renewal, and then we'll discuss.
I'm going to approve membership dues of $8,965 for MSVA.
Thank you. And second, Jane? Alright, any questions?
I'm not that thrilled that it's $9,000 for providing just suggestions, but I don't believe also that it's good for local control. I just don't believe in it.
With policies and such?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, they, it's a one-size-fits-all policy machine, and they don't really know what Hillsborough community means. They just churn out their stuff. For $9,000, that's a lot.
Well, there is a little bit more to that though, because we have had policies that, and I'm gonna use probably the biggest one that we developed ourselves with, was the nepotism policy. And, you know, they had the basic one, but we weren't happy with it, and we kept some of it back, and we, you know, had to, and so, we do.
I know local control is still possible, but we're paying $9,000 for.
And it's also a lot of training that we take advantage of every year.
Educated.
Can you be able to call and talk to somebody with a law background for free?
But we have, no, we're paying $50,000 for legal advice already.
Well, and every time we make those phone calls, it costs us, but MSVA, it costs us.
This is part of it, yeah. If you're asking what you're getting for $9,000, you're getting more than just policy.
Well, I, yeah.
I mean, are you prepared to make policy on what you have, your, I mean, I'm not. I like being able to call them and have a good recommendation on making policy for this school that has been proven in other school districts that guard the kids. But, I mean, have you made policy on your own prior?
Well, I haven't been elected to a board before, but I would be prepared to do so, yes. And I, I feel it's.
And based on what background?
Well, based on the background of being aware of how the school operates, I mean.
Well, I don't feel that way. But I, I would be very hesitant to serve on a board of anything that doesn't have some good resource. And I think the problem is with these kind of resources, which have a lot of lawyers on staff that can take a call, just pick up the phone, one 800 number, or other people that can talk to you just by calling them or sending an email, they do cost. So, it's a lot of money, but I think if you look at how much you would, I mean, we do have legal help too, but.
I, yeah, and we also, I mean, if you're looking for state law alerts or things like that, we have state representatives for that. And we can consult with them.
But you think a state representative is gonna pick up the phone every time you call?
They send, they do send me, state senators, and, you know, congratulations, you've been elected, blah, 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 but they're clearly wanting to make a relationship there. But, at the same time, we don't even try. That's my point.
We don't? What do you mean, we don't try what?
I mean, we don't try and contact state legislators, we don't try and have any sort of rapport with them.
No, we do.
Beth and I took a trip to Joe City this year, too, to admit.
Sure, sure.
And, but MSVA helps us with that legislative piece as well. They're constantly working with citizens and representatives as well, representing us as a, as a school too.
And I think this is a learning piece. I think they will see.
Right. I mean, John, and with all due respect, you haven't been to the training session yet, have you? That they offer? I think when you go, really. I, I mean, I might be wrong, but you will find a lot of education there. I, I found it very valuable, but you may, you may not agree.
And that's all included in that process too.
Now, this is something that comes up every year. I would encourage you to explore and learn more about MSVA, because this does come up every year. And you may have a different opinion next year, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I have done some research into them long before I was even running, but.
But now as a board member.
They are a non-elected in some ways. I mean, I know they're made up of board members, but they are a, a non-elected group in and of themselves. They're sort of a, they call themselves a nonprofit, even though they do advocate for certain political issues, one way or the other. They put out alerts, I guess, but the, I, I just don't like the fact that they are not a public agency who is controlling policy across the state. They're quasi, NGO, I guess is the term for that.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any other thoughts? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the membership dues to MSVA.
Now, the increase, sorry, 515 over the last year, is that in line with what we would expect, or was that?
It's usually based on enrollment.
It's based on enrollment?
So, it depends on what enrollment's doing. And then there are some of the increases, correct, Beth and 515?
Yes, it is based also on ASV, or Annual Secretary of Board Report Expenditures. That's how they decide what percentage to charge.
I know that policies that we wanted to create ourselves or change to fit ourselves better, the amount of time that they put into that, going back and forth, if we'd have had someone else do that, it'd probably have been well more than double this. Especially the nepotism, I mean, they spent so much time on that with us.
At the facility.
Going back and forth.
Their records.
I mean, it's several back. So, it's, that's a drop in the bucket over the last year.
I suppose it depends on when you want out of policy, though, too. And, I mean, they're hard to read, some of them. They're unlegalese, and I know this is a fault of all governments at all levels, but it's nice if they weren't written for lawyers sometimes. If they were written for people to understand. That's something I've noticed a lot of, too, policies. And if people are supposed to be governed under these things, it'd be nice if they didn't have to have some intermediary interpret them for them. Just, that's my feeling on it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, motion is still on the floor, so we'll be ready to vote. All in favor of approving the membership dues for MSVA, raise your hand, please. All opposed? Same side, thank you very much. Okay, we're, next item has to do with the corrected HSA plan rate. You were given a handout this evening with the corrections on it, I believe.
Looks like a part of the graph got cut off in your board packet. We do apologize for that. When you go off to work, the one-note, sometimes it's not really compatible when it comes to graphs. Yes, so.
So, tell, tell us the change.
The correction was, when I was in the executive summer, on the, the last meeting, I inadvertently put the 4,000, the cost of the $4,000 deductible, which was $406, and thus, the district contribution of 115. The, where you have planned, which is a $3,000 HSA, so it's that higher rate of 423. So, the employee gets the difference between the 521 district contribution and the $423, which is $98. That'll be the contribution to the HSA.
Instead of?
The 406, that was only funded a $4,000 deductible, which we didn't have that. I put them all on play.
I see, gotcha. Okay.
I make a motion to approve the corrected insurance.
Okay. Second. Did I hear a second? Okay, thank you. Any other questions or thoughts? Discussion on this change? Okay, so the recommendation is to approve the corrected health savings account amount. All in favor, raise your hand. Alright, very good. Next item has to do with our additional behavior teacher that we, we added before, correct? Are we planning to keep this position, is that right?
Yes, that's what is being proposed. Remember, if you voted, well, it's just ended this year, and now it's determining if you wanna carry on with it.
So, we've seen improvement, and it's been helpful, it's doing its job?
It's been huge, hasn't it?
I was gonna say, Dr. Wallace, what, have you seen, is it very?
Okay.
Make a motion.
Okay. So, we have, we need a motion, or we have a motion from Rob to approve the continuation of the, oh, I thought it was Rob. It wasn't, yeah. Oh, I didn't hear that, okay. Continue the behavior teacher position, and second, by Beth. Petrie, then. Any other questions? I'm glad some, this has been a help. That's awesome. Okay, very good.
Has there been a change in the number of students receiving that service over the last year? Or maybe just how they're being serviced?
I don't, I guess I'm fully receiving the question.
I know, I'm trying to figure out how to phrase it. Any, I guess the number of students who are receiving behavior services? Is it more or less? Is it more, is it less? Has that changed fluctuated over the year?
So, the question is, with the increase of this position, having it there, has there been an increase in the students that are receiving help in that classroom for behavior services? Or has it stayed the same, but it's still a great benefit to the ones that access it currently?
I'm just curious, that's all.
There's been, there's been an increase in the amount of services that have been provided in these students that could potentially be added to that. That is a 90 to 120 day process on that, or part of the piece of that, so that will take time if there are additional services and support that's been provided for those students.
That makes us wonder why we didn't do this earlier?
Well, you don't have more.
Alright, yeah. Well, I know, it's always that.
It's always money.
I know. Okay, so the motion is to approve. So the motion is to approve the continuation of the behavior teacher position. All right. All in favor of continuing this position, raise your hand. Okay. All opposed? Upstint? Thank you. All right. Last one has to do with setting a date for the calendar hearing. So that's something we do every year, correct? And that's when the public has their opportunity to come in and talk about the calendar?
Correct. By law, any school starting 10 days prior to the first day of September has to have a hearing for the public.
Okay. So is there a recommendation for this date?
May the 3rd.
Always special meeting.
Well, we talked about that earlier.
Yes, I did. Talked about it.
Okay. Okay.
I make a motion.
Thank you.
To accept the calendar hearing date.
As May the 3rd.
As May the 3rd.
Thank you very much. And second, Renee. What time do we want to start this meeting? Do we normally do it at 6:00?
Yes, ma'am.